We will reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, February 12, 2019. Do you have anything to report out?
Do you have anything to adjourn the special meeting?
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Call the roll.
Councilmembers Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
And Howe.
Okay, we will convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, February 12, 2019. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Gaylord.
Here.
And Howe.
Here. And if you will all join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any agenda updates?
No agenda updates.
Okay. Do we have any requests to speak on business from the floor?
No requests to speak.
Is there anybody that would like to speak to the council but anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, then we will move on to scheduled presentations.
First scheduled presentation is presentation by Folsom Police and Fire regarding emergency preparedness in Folsom.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening. Honorable Baron and City Council Chairman Felipe Rodriguez, I am your fire chief.
And?
Rick Hillman, Chief of Police.
All right, well, this evening we have, we're privileged to present to you the status of the city of Folsom's emergency preparedness. As we know, there have been some disasters throughout the state over the last several years, and the question has been asked is, you know, what about Folsom? How are we prepared? And with that, we wanted to present to you several slides and let you know exactly where we're at and where we're going. So this evening, we're going to discuss a few different topics. The first one being our emergency preparedness requirements, our department resources, our emergency operations plan, threat assessment summary, emergency operations center, evacuations, emergency alerts, and our continuous efforts. First and foremost, how do we manage our emergencies here and what is emergency preparedness all about? Our city code dictates exactly what we're supposed to be doing. It's for the preparation and carrying out of plans for the protection of life, environment, and property. And our Director of Emergency Services during any large-scale emergency or disaster is our city manager, and she's assisted by the police chief, by me or fire chief, and other city personnel. She may proclaim or request the city council to proclaim a local emergency, and that is a condition of disaster or of extreme peril to the safety of persons and property. It also discusses the emergency operations plan, and that's what we use. And the emergency operations plan provides for the effective mobilization of all of our city resources and for the organization, powers, and duties, services, and staff. So, the day-to-day operations that, or emergencies that we respond to, we were able to handle those without any issues. Today, we're going to be focusing a little bit more on the larger-scale disasters or emergencies that we may face. But before we do that, we're going to tell you a little bit about our departments and what we actually can provide for the city here. So I'm going to turn it over to the police chief to discuss the police department.
Good evening. So, the police department operates a public safety answering point, so a PSAP. This is where all 911 calls go to in the city of Folsom. It is a primary answering point. On duty with the police department, 24 hours a day, we have five sworn personnel minimum and two dispatchers on minimally. We occasionally have staffing as high as 16 sworn officers and four dispatchers. Last year, we responded to over 61,000 calls for service, nearly 62,000 calls for service. Our average response time was 13 minutes and 4 seconds. Our city's divided in five geographical areas. We look at those areas, and we divide those up so that we can spread out our resources as best we can to provide the quickest response to each area. We usually put one officer in each area, mostly one through four. Area five, which is the newest area in our city, we will put officers out there if they are available. Our police communications center intakes six 911 lines. 911s that come in for fire or for medical emergencies are transferred to the fire department. They have a fire dispatch center out of Rancho Cordova that dispatches for all fire dispatch. So our police department only dispatches for our department, the police department.
Rick, I don't know if this is the question for you or Felipe, but when stuff go, when fire and medical calls go to Rancho, is that region-wide? Does Eldorado Hills get those calls as well?
Not Eldorado Hills. That would go up to CDF in Camino. So, Folsom.
Well, I only ask because of mutual aid, that's all.
So the fire dispatch in Rancho would work if Eldorado Hills was needed. They would get a hold of Camino dispatch and get the resources down here that they needed. So we have six 911 lines available to us in Folsom. We also have two 10-digit emergency lines. We have six business lines that our dispatchers are responsible for answering. They also are responsible for listening to one active radio channel, which would be our Folsom Police Department main radio channel, and eight other radio channels, such as the Fire Department's channel, the Sacramento Sheriff's Department East Area Radio Channel, a hotline channel so that they're aware of other things going on around us, and any number of channels, maybe the Highway Patrol.
Okay, so, the fire department, been around since 1857. It's a long tradition and history here. We have five fire stations with four fire engines, one fire truck, three ambulances. We perform special rescue operations such as water rescue, and we have fire prevention staff. All of those pictures there were all taken within the last year, year and a half at the most. Twenty-three sworn personnel on duty 24 hours a day, and last year, we responded to 8,525 emergency responses with an average response time of 5 minutes and 41 seconds. We have five fire stations strategically located throughout the city, stations 35, 36, 37, 38, and most recently, we added Station 39 in September. As the police department, we also have our geographical areas to provide for the fastest response time. The numbers are corresponding to the exact location as best as possible to where the fire stations are currently located throughout the city. I wanted to show this slide here because our water supply is something that is a very important thing for the fire department and for the city. And this is an exact picture of what's, what we have in the historic district. As you notice, we have hydrants pretty much on every corner, and we have a great water supply. They're located throughout, and during, throughout the rest of the city, we also have hydrants everywhere. When we install, when we build new homes or approve the construction of new homes or businesses, we require the hydrants to also be located within anywhere from 400 to 600 feet of that structure throughout the entire city. Now, let's get into the emergency plan itself. Emergency plans are what we use to make decisions for larger emergencies. As I mentioned, the day-to-day emergencies, we respond to over 8,000. They respond to over 61,000. But it's the larger emergencies, how would we handle that? Something like Paradise, something like the Tubbs Fire, or the bigger, the larger emergencies. We have our emergency plan. We also review the other plans and use the other plans to guide us. So our community has a wildfire protection plan that's been in place. It's currently going through, through an update. And then we also abide by the county's plans, the hazard mitigation plan, the operational area plan, evacuation plans, and mass care and shelter plans. So I'm going to focus on our city's plan. This is our emergency operations plan, a very good document, over 800 pages long. It is a little old. It is under review at this point, and we are hoping to bring a new updated one to the council in the next several months. It has three parts. The first part is the basic plan, and that covers all your basic information on emergency management, the four phases, preparedness, response, recovery, mitigation. Has other sections within it that refer to our authorities and references, hazard mitigation, mutual aid, which is a very important thing for us, and our threat assessment summary. Part two are the incident command system structure, the five different sections, and those oversee a lot of the important things that allow us to continue, the continuity of government, our emergency operations center, checklists for every position, and evacuations. That section itself is over 600 pages long. And lastly, very important one, are all of our legal documents. That is our plan that we abide by, that, like I said, is currently under update. I'm going to focus on the threat assessment summary, which is something that we really need to pay close attention to. The plan calls out 13 different threat assessments, different threats that we may face, some of them more than others, some are more likely than others. From earthquakes to floods to fires, severe weather, power failures, and radiological situations, even a dam failure, and they're not very likely, but we have to be ready for it. The most common one that we would probably face would be either a wildfire, fire situation, or a flooding situation. And when you open up the plan itself and look into a little bit deeper, it has different sections within, within it to cover all of these assessments. Those are broken down even further to explain to us the situation itself and our impacted areas, description of the different impacts on how they would affect different things like transportation or utilities. Some of them have evacuation routes associated with them. We also have some maps associated with them and attachments. California is very prone to fires, and this is the most recent map. It's a little bit out, you know, outdated. Been about 13, 14 years since CalFire put one of these together. But this is the state of California, and it describes it by color, so the yellow being little or no threat to the area is all the way to very high. If you focus on our area here in the Sacramento region, specifically Folsom, it now shows you exactly what we would be faced with for our fire threat. Most of our city is in a moderate fire threat, and we do have some areas that we are concerned with, which would be our very high areas. That would be around the American River Canyon, Humbug Willow Creek area, the eastern part of our city, and in the Folsom Plan area. We do have certain properties that are in the high to very high risk areas, about 2,700 of them, worth about $1.46 billion to us, and these are areas that we definitely want to focus on, that we want to provide service for.
Chief, with regard to the area south of the freeway.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that likely to change as development continues there?
Well, that's a great question, and the area on the eastern end is already under construction at this point. We are going to have some open space areas that we have to pay close attention to, but as they develop, put roads and infrastructure in, it will reduce some of that, so during the next threat assessment, that will change.
And likely get more yellow?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes. The next slide that I'm going to focus on, not to go through every single one, but floods. So as I said, fires and floods would probably be the most likely that we would face. This one is broken down into two different risk categories, if you will. FEMA gives it a one in, about a 100-year, one in 100 chance of flood occurring on the left side. And you'll see that we have about 31 parcels there, affect about, about $2.3 million worth of value. And then the other area would be the shaded area, more of a line area, that would be a .2 percent chance, about a 500-year flood. More parcels, $122 and $153 million. I circle the two areas where the creeks run through, so anywhere where there are creeks or rivers or any waterways, we have a potential for flooding. We are aware of those areas, and we have plans in place for those. If we were to have to activate due to a fire or a flood, we would open up our emergency operations center, and I'm going to turn it over to the police chief for that section.
So how we've prepared as a city for any type of major incident is we've constructed an emergency operations center at the police department. If you haven't been on a tour of the police department and seen the emergency operations center that we have, I encourage you to do so. We open our facility every year around October for tours, but you're always encouraged to come through. We updated our emergency operations center in 2010 with some grant funds, so it's a fairly modern facility. It will accommodate 80 different positions. It's a backup facility to Sacramento County's emergency operations center. We also use it as a training room, so adjacent to this main room, there's also a separate room where we conduct training on a regular basis. And it is always ready for activation, so we have a bunch of laptop computers that are always charged and ready to go, and while the desks looked empty there, it's meant to be like that because the laptops are in a docking station and prepared. There's also a small conference room that you all would go to for decision-making, separate from the EOC, that would be working where all department heads and others would be meeting and doing their work. The, the facility is powered, but we do have a UPS system in place. It's a fairly new UPS system. In the event of a power failure, this UPS system would ensure no loss of power to our system for 15 to 45 minutes, depending on that load. And then we have a generator that would kick in and keep the, both the communications center and the emergency operations center operational for up to 29 hours without needing to be refueled, and then we have a system in place for refueling if needed.
Rick, how much fuel do we typically store?
Good question.
So, and the reason I ask the question is, does that mean that we get another 29 hours or five more sets of 29 hours? You don't need to answer me right this second, but I think we need to know the answer to that question.
Yes, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
I just know that it'll run up to 29 hours. It's tested, I think, every other week to make sure that it runs and is, it's kept and maintained all the time, so. But a good question. I'll have to look into that. So our traffic management center, that's something new, and I'm sure all of you have heard a lot about that. We have 16 cameras that are operational at intersections, and it's maintained and managed by the Public Works Department with 30 different intersections that they can control signals at, so that in the event of an emergency and we needed to control the flow of traffic, our Public Works Department could help and maintain that flow of traffic. If we needed to evacuate a certain area, they could help with that.
So, Chief, sorry.
Yes.
On that, Zach had mentioned that you guys were, or they were deploying the Genetek federated server for the CCTV. Is that something PD is going to work with going forward as well to have, dispatch have all the views of the cameras?
So Commander Browning had a meeting with them today, and we haven't had much time today to meet, to discuss that, but that's one of the things that we are looking at, yes.
Cool.
So, as I said, the police department is a primary answering point for 911, but while we do have several things in place for power failures and such, we do have to plan that there could be something that goes wrong at the police facility where we might have to evacuate the facility. What happens then? So we do have a switch that we can turn over our 911 calls, and they would go to the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. So people calling 911 from Folsom, if we have to evacuate our communications center, they would seamlessly go to the Sheriff's Department. We have had to have, had to do that on a couple of occasions. One was a loss of power and the generator did not kick in, and we had a complete power failure as the police department. The Sheriff's Department picked up our 911 calls without a problem. Our 911, or, excuse me, our non-emergency lines can be forwarded, and we have hibernated cell phones that we can just turn on and activate in the event of an emergency. In about 2003, we took possession of a command, mobile command and communications vehicle. It has about 20 radios in it, so we can talk to pretty much anybody, more people than we want to. But it also has room for five dispatch stations, and it would allow our dispatchers to relocate if necessary. So if we had a problem at the police facility and had to evacuate the facility, our dispatchers could always get in this vehicle. It could be located somewhere else where it's safe, it runs off a generator as well, and they could dispatch at another location. So we have backup plans if necessary, and it does have a conference room.
Okay, almost to the final part of it, but evacuations, and that is a big deal for everybody, and we need to be ready for that if ever needed to, to have to move large quantities of people to locations. So we have several sites that are already approved here in the city of Folsom. Red Cross has certified all of these as being locations where we could potentially move people. And there's a difference between a center and a shelter. A center is used during the day, so you'll see the numbers on the right correspond to day capacity. That would be during the daytime hours. If they have to spend the night, then it becomes a shelter, and the numbers obviously decrease because you need room for beds and such. But we have our own sports complex, our two high schools, our two middle schools, Folsom Lake College, and then three churches that have all been approved as sites that we would reach out to, to have to move people to. How do we evacuate our areas throughout our city? Our plan calls for 24 different areas from the northernmost part of our city all the way to the southernmost, back at the time when the plan was created. As I mentioned earlier, we are updating that plan, but all of these areas have an actual little breakdown of the area itself, so the boundaries for the area, the access control points for the police department, evacuation routes so that we can actually move people and recommend through NICSOL alerts or different alerting systems to tell them which direction to go, and any critical facilities that would be within those areas. I wanted to point out a very important thing on this slide here. As part of our update, I've reached out to our new GIS specialist, she's actually sitting right here in the front row, Kate Casera, who's done a fantastic job of renumbering the 24 sections within our city to now 35 sections within our city. And we did have a request from Councilmember Kozlowski a while ago to make this more of an interactive map that we can actually provide for our citizens, and that is something that we're finalizing now, so that you can actually go online, click into your section of your, of the city where you live, and it'll provide you with a little bit closer, such as like number one here, some routes that we can refine and change to provide people direction as to where they should go. And my hope is in time to do it as a GPS-based system, that they can actually get up on their phone and be able to move to a different location or at least get out of that general area.
So how would that go out, a NICSOL alert?
Initially, it would go up probably as a NICSOL alert to please evacuate this area, and then hopefully, I know that Kate's talked to me about being able to connect that so that you can actually look it up on your phone and.
So that's more incentive to get people to, to register for NICSOL?
Very much so.
Okay.
Yes.
So what's the, the integration between the traffic management system and your department if it's like after-hours emergency, is there someone always there to, because I think one of the big problems, and I wasn't there, but for Paradise, was, you know, clogging of the roads and not knowing where to go and like lighting all the lights green one-way type thing, is that?
Correct. So, part of our, yeah, it's a great question. No, it's perfect, because it's actually on our final slide that we're covering, is the importance of that exact thing right there, to have some integration and working on our traffic signals and direction for people to, to be able to move. So that's a big deal. Speaking of the NICSOL and emergency alerts, Madam Mayor, this is it right here. We ask for all residents to please register your cellphones on NICSOL and on Sacramento Emergency Alert. We ran a test here last month, and I had the report back from the Office of Emergency Services, and Folsom came in, in first place with about 94%.
Any surprise there, really?
But 94% of the, the messages that went out, or the information that went out, was actually received on the back end by somebody. So that was a big deal because they were in the 70s and percent range elsewhere. So, very important, but still, we don't have a large enough population here with registered cellphones. Landlines are automatically registered, but cellphones have to be registered. It's so important that people log on to our website, either Police Department, Fire Department, or Emergency Information webpage, and please just click on it, register your cellphone, email, text, whatever it is, we will get the information back to you.
And is that already on the city's website and Police and Fire's website?
Yes, ma'am. So, on the final slide, I'm going to click on it, and I'm going to show you exactly so that the viewers out there can see exactly where to go to register. So important that we're able to communicate to them.
Awesome.
All right. Last slide before the end is our continuous efforts. What have we still got going on? And, you know, it'd be unfair of us to come up here, present this of all of the great things that are happening, but what are we doing from this point forward? We owe it to you to let you know that we are updating our emergency operations plan, including annexes such as, you know, some of our other great plans like Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and performing exercises, actually putting it into place, developing an interactive evacuation map with routes. Ms. Kate's working on that now. Conduct an updated threat assessment. We have 13 of those, but it's so important to get an updated one. And exactly, Madam Mayor, to answer your question, it will change some of the look of our city, of some of the areas that were previously high-threat may change down to moderate threat to be in line with the rest of the city. And that's very important for us to do, to really get a clear picture of where we're at. Integrate technology. So, Councilmember Gaylord, this is it right here. GPS-based emergency dispatching, we're the closest resource, closest fire engine goes based on GPS. Traffic control signals, integrating that with exactly what we have going on. Yes?
Is there a way to get a line item that specifically states integrated CCTV? Because what happens typically is, is that falls off because of budget, but it's a, it's an integral piece, especially when you're, like, going into a federated, like, integrated server itself, so you have all those parts and components, but it usually always falls off. So I don't know if there's a way to, like, have that as, as something like every, when we were looking at the parks, when we were looking at what we're doing, it's not pipe for fiber to have cameras, like, all these different things that we're doing going forward. We're not looking at having that as a line item as something that should be considered, but it's, I think it's part and crucial, it's, it should be up on this map as well.
Duly noted.
Cool.
Yes. Data analysis to really assist us with situational awareness. There's so much data out there, integrating some of that, some of the information that Google provides as well, and they offer it free for us to use. Public education is one of the most important, reaching out to our community and partnering with them. Vegetation management is something that we can't ignore. We're distinctive by nature. We have a lot of trees. We want our trees. We want a beautiful place where people can ride their bikes and go to the parks and enjoy. It's up to us now to make sure that's maintained, both public and private. Hardening of homes and businesses, and I put quotes around hardening because people ask, what does hardening mean? That's a new term that you'll hear, and that's building homes that are more resistant to fire. We live in a state that's prone to fire. Let's build our homes correctly. More stucco siding, more brick or block, you know, some nice stone along the side for the first two or three feet to really provide some, a little bit of a buffer so that when a fire does come up to your house, it can stop. The screens and the vents, to have really fine mesh screens so that the embers don't get into. They're clearing, you know, putting gutter guards and roofing material that's resistant to fire. That's hardening your home and creating some defensible space with the proper setbacks. Continuing the upgrading and maintaining of our city infrastructure for anything from generators to buildings and apparatus. And then lastly, is continuing to provide exceptional emergency services that we've been providing for many, many decades, and I would recommend that we really focus on all of these efforts, along with others that may come up, to provide the nice, safe, and secure place for our residents. With that, I will open it up to any questions, and I do want to show you that emergency information so that people can see how to register their phones. Any questions from any?
Yes. I have one. First of all, this is fantastic for a lot of reasons. Principally among them is I'd never got to see any of those plans previously, so I'm glad to know that they exist and that you're working on improving them. My, my original. My original question about this topic had at least partially to do with how do we manage traffic going through the city that's not intending to stay here in an emergency? So primarily if, say, there were a fire that caused an evacuation in Cameron Park or in Granite Bay and people were trying to crisscross past the lake, we would have potentially people trying to evacuate one of those places and also trying to get back to those places because their kids are in school and what have you. So I'm just wondering, the regional plan for traffic management and evacuation, how do, I guess I'm just looking for a way to be able to communicate that to Folsom residents and what their role should be in the event that Cameron Park is being evacuated. And it might be that our role is to stay where you are, park your car, you know, but that was, that was at least part of the concern that I had. I could imagine Green Valley being the bottleneck that happened in Paradise is basically what I was thinking of. So that's the one thing. And then I'd love the fact that you're connecting the GPS to something that's interactive. I would like to see us work towards a situation where we can do what effectively would be a virtual fire drill so that if, you know, anytime you wanted to go onto a location on the city's website or somewhere, you could poke your house on the map and know that in the event of an emergency, here's the shelter or center that's closest for you to go to, here's the way you should go there. So instead of being prompted when there's emergency, at least have the opportunity to learn that in advance. And our communication director is here also. I think there's probably a promotion around that that we could do at some point. So thank you very much and don't rush this. I don't have to see it in two months, but I'm glad that you guys are working on it.
The only thing I would add to that, Mike, that's all good commentary, but I think in the case of knowing the closest shelter to you, I think maybe you need to know the two closest shelters and two ways to get to either location because it depends on where the emergency is.
I will definitely rely on our professionals here to give us advice on, you know, what the best practice is, but-
I'm just glad I live closest-
A virtual fire drill process.
I'm just glad that I live closest to the largest center.
You do. Now, there would be some coordination that needs to take place even with the centers themselves or the shelters to make sure that they're open, that they're staffed and that we have the right people in place. But getting the information to the public is key. For those who don't live here in Folsom, registering their phones on the standard Sacramento Alert is very important. And for those who do live here, to register on Sacramento Alert, which is GPS-based, it'll send you a message if you happen to be driving into a location, Everbridge, that is in danger. It'll send you an alert, letting you know that.
Because that, because that also means that we've got people that are Placer County, because our neighbors are Placer County and Eldorado County.
So we have Sacramento Alert, it covers Yolo, Placer and Sacramento, and then Eldorado Hills has a different one that they, they don't use ours, but Everbridge is the one that can be used anywhere in the nation and those are, Sacramento Alert is, and NICSIL are both part of Everbridge.
And then just, just one, one last thing, not that we have an unlimited budget for special projects, but the, the Welcome to Folsom signs that have special events coming up, maybe some piece of that should be an electronic message board that can be converted to fire police, you know, instructions when necessary.
That's an interesting idea. Thanks.
Yeah.
So I just want to show this last page so at least the viewers can see it and everybody who's here. Every one of our city webpages has a little button on the bottom right corner that says emergency information. When you click it, it goes straight to this page and it'll give you information on our current status, which is updated, and also this nice little button that says register for emergency alerts. That's your NICSIL and that's your Everbridge Sacramento Alert. The right side has a lot of really, I mean, pretty much any type of disaster you can find, I mean, even snowstorms, now that we would hopefully not see one of those here.
It's happened.
And space weather, how's that one? What's happening up there and how that would affect our grid and all of that. And then a really important one is your emergency kit and what you should have inside of your emergency kit at home, some very basic tips. So I would recommend that those who are watching, view this and prepare yourself with a kit.
That's a big trunk. That's not a kit.
That is a big trunk, huh? Yeah, but some basic items, water, some cash, some, you know, change of clothes.
Sleeping bags for all the people.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what, that's what it said.
And then, yeah, you can have, whatever, you know, make it to fit you, basically. But register for emergency alerts, that's it right here with our NICSIL and Sacramento Alert. And there's our beautiful police cars from our police department.
Chief Rodriguez, those areas of the city that are considered high, high fire threat, do the property owners in those areas, do they know they're in a higher, high threat area and do you work with them to create defensible space or whatever it is you do?
So when we know that there are areas in the city that have a higher threat than normal, then, you know, some of those areas such as American River Canyon or even, we reached out to Diamond Glen recently and went out and met with them, they actually have a very nice community there that's very well protected. But whenever we do have an area that's like that, that's one of our first priorities is to reach out to them and focus our plans around that itself. Years ago, they put together the Community Wildfire Protection Plan that was put together by some of our residents, working with the previous fire chief to make that happen. And that's a very important thing. That's one of the ones that we're actually updating at this point to make sure that everybody knows exactly what, where it is.
Yep, okay. And this may be a question for Pam also, but when you talk about hardening of homes, is that just, is that right now we're relying on state mandates or voluntary or are we doing anything at a local city level to encourage that?
We are providing information to people, but we don't have any requirements above and beyond the minimum requirements in building code.
At this time? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
There's a lot there.
Thank you so very much for your-
Thank you.
Thank you. Great work, thank you.
And with that, we will move on to our next special presentation.
Next scheduled presentation is City Manager's Financial Report, including CAFER findings for fiscal year 2018 and the fiscal year 2018-19 Second Quarter Financial Report.
Mayor, members of the council, Jim Francis, the Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer. Tonight, I'm going to give you a brief overview of the fiscal year 1718 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is the official audited financial statements for the city and also an update on our, this fiscal, this fiscal year, the second quarter report as our status as where we are this year. I'll start with just a general overview and I've included the prior fiscal year too. But as you can see, in fiscal year 1718, we had about 823,000, which is a little less than 1% of the appropriation on balance, so we came in under budget. Our assigned fund, unassigned fund balance rose to 15.0, almost $7 million, which is 18.4% and your policy is a minimum of 15%. So we're above that policy minimum. This fiscal year, the projected 1819, again, we have about a 7% increase in revenues and expenditures over last year. We're looking at about 920,000, again, a little less than 1% or about 1% of our appropriate amount. And that should raise our unassigned fund balance up to 16.7 million, again, keeping even at about 18.3. As we go on, it will, to keep at that 18% level, it will require more and more funds as our budget goes up. So it becomes harder to maintain a level or increase a level. And we'll talk about that a little bit more as we go on. In terms of this fiscal year, in the quarter, second quarter summary, right now, we're looking at a, roughly a $600,000 surplus in, on the revenue side. Most of that's non-tax related as our tax-related numbers are almost exact. And we're looking at a 326,000 under-budget expenditures. So that would give us the fund balance of 920,000 that we've projected. Our major sources of revenue, of course, are property tax sales and sales tax. Property tax has stayed fairly level. It's gone up about 5% or 6% per year and that's a continuing trend. Sales tax looks a little strange here because of the dip. That was because of a overpayment that was made to the city back in 1617. So, and then they took the money back, of course, last year to recover that. But this has been a fairly straight level, around 4% or 5% increase. Again, we'll talk about that in just a minute, a little bit more. Our charges for services, the last two years are fairly flat as we haven't really raised rates at all and attendance and use has been about the same. Our transfers in from other funds was 7.9 million, which is fairly normal. We're a little high this year. We had some special projects that were in this budget and that's the reason for that. If we look at our fees that come in, you can see parks and rec fees have been fairly level over the last two years and we're projecting that, a little increase for this fiscal year. Ambulance fees have certainly risen and that's because we added a third ambulance unit. So our fees for that have gone up because of their activity. Development fees are up last year and this year and that's primarily related to the developments both north and south of 50. We've had lots of developments in both sides. And building permits, it's the same, same kind of experience. 1,007,000 last year and about the same this year. And again, that's due to the activity both north and south of Highway 50. OES, I mentioned there is just, that's the reimbursement we get from the state when we send firefighters or police officers to primarily firefighting duties. And I just wanted to throw this in to let you know that the plan area, the south of 50 area, is generating revenue for us. Most of it is specific in nature in that impact fees, utility charges, building permit fees and development plans go to specific purposes. And these are six-month totals, these are not projected yearly totals, so this is through December. And then, but property tax certainly is a tax or revenue that the council's free to do, whatever. And that's included in our assessment of what our property tax would be for the city. We haven't separated those out. I just wanted to let you know or show you that we are collecting-
So Jim, that's, that's since the beginning of the fiscal year last summer?
It would include last summer, yes.
Through what, January?
Yeah, from July, yes, from July through December.
Okay. And that's as received so far, not projected at the end of the fiscal year?
That's correct. Then I just wanted to give a, a little bit of history in terms of the revenues. And this goes back to before the recession, during the recession and after the recession back in '07 through '09. Property taxes, you can see, is the red line or is the blue line, has had a constance since the recession, has been fairly consistent in going up and that's been about, again, 5% or 6% increase per year. And we're looking at that continuing. Actually, in a couple of weeks, when you meet again and we have a budget workshop, we'll talk a little bit more about how these lines get extended and which direction they go in. Sales tax has had the same kind of experience, although we're beginning to see, it doesn't look like much here, but we are beginning to see some leveling off of sales tax and we do have some concerns for the future, especially around the Amazon warehouse issue. Right now, the sales tax on sales from there, which are internet sales primarily, go to a county pool and those are shared based on our proportion of sales in the region. There's a proposal and I believe a legal finding that those sales tax will now go to wherever the warehouse is located. So in this case, those taxes would go to the county because it's in the county and we would lose that revenue. That would mean about a $700,000 loss for us.
So we need to get a warehouse?
Pardon?
So we need a warehouse?
Yeah, we need a warehouse.
Either that or we need for our people to shop in actual stores.
Yeah, I, yeah. I would bet that the internet sales are going to go higher than the, our experience is the internet sales and the amount that we got there has gone up double digits year to year. Our retail sales are pretty much flat.
Based on the deliveries at my neighbor's house, I would agree with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Jim has already circled on a map where he wants to put our Amazon warehouse for me.
Yeah, just got to get Amazon to agree to it, so. Again, the green line is our charges for services and we're seeing some, as I showed before, some flattening of that line and we can, we'll again, talk a little bit more about that in a couple of weeks at the budget workshop. You'll see a spike down here in the transfers in and again, that's due to the special projects we had this year and that's really not a trend line, so that will probably be down in this area again next year.
Jim, before we go off that chart-
Yep.
The trough in the sales tax revenue from 2006 to 2014-
Yep.
Collectively, am I right in saying that that's probably approaching $20 million right there?
Yeah, well, that's-
If you take the reductions-
Yeah, if you take both the sales tax, and that was the impact, obviously, of the recession.
Mm-hmm.
And if you take just the sales tax and the decrease you had and the amount of time before it got back to the previous level, which was about 10 years, and the same with the property tax, which was just delayed a little bit-
Right.
We had a loss of revenue of $34 million.
Collectively?
Collectively.
Okay, thank you.
The, on the expenditure side, you can see salaries have gone up roughly 4% to 5% a year and that's within the expectation that we've had. Benefits have gone up about 10% to 11%. Almost all of that increase in the last two years has been because of your PERS contribution. In 1718, of that 24.7 million, 13 and a half million of that was your PERS contribution. In 1819, this year of the 27 million, 16 million of that is your PERS contribution. And that trend will continue because we're going to have next year another $2.5 million increase in our PERS contribution. And again, at your budget time, we'll go into a lot more detail on that and I'll give you an expanded forecast of what that means to the city. O and M's been pretty flat the last couple of years. Capital Outlay, again, we had major projects that we are doing this year and were paid for, including the pool renovation and some, and some work at the firehouse, which was part of, included in this projection. And then our debt service, you can see, has gone down and that's primarily because of the debt service we had on the city hall campus, at least part of it went away this year, so.
We forgot to have that mortgage burning party that we were planning.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that would have been nice. But that was a nice, it was nice to get rid of that. And this will probably disappear in, I believe it's 2027. And this will probably disappear in, I believe it's 2027. Again, this, this is just a visual of your unassigned general fund balance, again, showing it's gone up. This was the low point after the recession where we spent, we were down to 4 million. We spent roughly 22 million from fund balance during the recession. So again, to your question on that, we lost about 34 million. We spent 22 million from a fund balance, and we had about $12 million of cutbacks that we made, which amounted to over 150 positions. So that's kind of the, the impact of that. And it's been 10 years to recover from it. Again, whoop.
Jim?
Yes?
What's the drop from 20 down on the, from the 20% down below 20% for 18 and 19?
Well, that's just that, to maintain this 19%, you would have had to have put in about a million and a half dollars, and we put in less than a million those two years. So the percentage went down to 18.4 and 18.3 in the last two years. And that's going to continue. If we, the amount of money you need to put into fund balance needs to increase if you want to maintain it at 18 or even go up from that.
I was going to say, can we bump that to 19?
Pardon?
Could we bump that to 19?
Well, it's a.
That's something that we'll basically need to discuss during the budget.
Yeah, you can do, you can certainly plan on it in the budget process, yeah.
We could bump it to 75, but we wouldn't be spending any money on anything.
Yeah.
And we'd be laying a lot of people off.
Yep.
That wasn't my question.
But the, I, you know, again, I don't want to get off track a little bit, but you probably need, in terms of recessions, you probably, to be safe, need about $20 million. That would cover you through a typical recession that would be a repeating kind of thing that we've had in the past. The one we had the last time would be categorized as a severe recession, and we're not planning on that sort of a recession. You know, that's 30, $35 million of loss. But 20 million's about the norm. You can have some, obviously, less than that. And then if you go beyond, you know, 35 million, you're in a depression state, so I'll be retiring then, thank you.
No, but I think, I think that's important to understand, that, that $20 million that we're talking about would be norm for the city of Folsom. It's not the norm for most of the other agencies in the region, including the county. I don't know what their reserve is now, but I know a couple of years ago it was only $1 million.
No, that's true.
And they have a billion-dollar budget. Their budget is much bigger than ours.
If we go to the enterprise funds, with the Water Enterprise Fund, you can see the charges for services went up slightly, and that's simply due to the use of water and not having to drive it anymore and, and people watering more. So on the volume, we went up, and we're looking at a pretty flat number for this year. Operational expenses are up and will probably continue to go up. We've had capital expenses in the $2 to $5 million range. Normally, you'd probably want that about $4 or $5 million to maintain your system. Your working capital's in fine shape. You're about $14 million. The thing to keep in mind with this is the difference between this number, your charges, and your expenses. So you can see in 1617, we were 2 million, 2 million 1. In 1718, that became, you know, 1 million 6, and now it's about 400,000. That's not the direction we want it to go, certainly, if you want to keep your capital expenses on a pay-as-you-go basis. Otherwise, you're going to have to look at bonding, which in the long run is going to cost you a lot of money. So our policy has been, for all the enterprise funds, and I'll, I'll repeat it with the others, so far, to be on a pay-as-you-go basis. Though, the Water Enterprise Fund does have a debt service, because we did issue bonds back in, in 2008, I believe it was, at that time, and you've got this $2 million debt payment that you're going to have for a long time there. And to add to that would simply add to that.
So are you saying that that's the only bond indebtedness that we have?
No, there's the 900,000 that I showed, let's see if I can get that again, right there.
Okay, gotcha.
And that's on the City Hall complex. It's a lease.
But $3 million?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a lot now, and that will be paid off in 27, 2027.
Fantastic.
And I think some of that had to do with plan upgrades as well?
Yes.
In the, in the water fund for the water treatment plant?
Sure.
Oh, yeah. No, I, yeah, it was certainly well-used money that we, and we've refinanced it to lower the cost of that. But you, you just need to watch your debt service in terms of not increasing it. As you'll see in the wastewater, there is no debt service. We don't have, we've not issued bonds for that. But you, and you've got the same issue. You've got 2.3 million here is the difference between charges and, and costs, and then 2 million, and then you've got 1 million 8. So wastewater is certainly in better shape, because those are fairly even numbers. But you really want your capital expenses, and these are probably a little low. This should probably be up for maintenance purposes around 3 to 4 million dollars. But you want to be able to cover that. Again, you've got a working capital, a nice reserve there, which helps with that, so you don't have to be exact all the time. So it's in good shape from that way, but projecting it out would certainly require some discussion to keep it that way. Solid waste, same sort of situation, no debt service, but your margins are getting smaller, so you're at 1 million 5 here. You're at 300,000 here, and you're, you're out of sync here. You're at the negative. So you're going to have about $1 million of capital expense in solid waste on average, and that's just vehicle replacement issues. Again, you're working.
Occasionally, the replacement of trash cans.
Yeah, trash cans, too.
Dumpsters, that stuff.
Your working capital's in pretty good shape for that, but you do need to watch going forward, you know. You're going to have another issue with solid waste, which I'm sure, sure will be brought to the council in the future, which is how to deal with recyclables. We used to be able to, we were paid, actually, to take our recyclables. In the future, not only are we going to not be paid, but we're going to have to pay to get rid of them. And, because China's no longer accepting recyclables from the United States as the main reason. So that's going to have a big impact. And again, that's about a $700,000 swing for us also. About 400,000 in the revenue side and about a 350,000 expense side. So, you know, that's going to be an issue going forward.
Ballpark $10 a person per year?
Yeah, roughly, yeah. Your risk management fund includes all your insurance programs, does not include your PERS contributions, that's separate. You're in good shape in terms of charges and in terms of operating expenses. You have a good unrestricted net position. What that allows you to do is to minimize swings in this budget, because health costs, workers' comp liability tend to have exaggerated swings in terms of what they cost. And by having this kind of a reserve, we, we've been able to minimize that. So for instance, we're, we charge, the way this gets charged is, on a per-employee basis, we charge for the whole thing. So it's, in 1718, it was $18,000 per employee. But in 1819, it was, we made it 17,700, so we actually went down. And we're going to recommend in 1920 to you, when you get that budget, keeping that flat. So that's a way that we've tried to mitigate the impact of your PERS contribution, which is going up, and we don't really have a way to mitigate that, except by keeping this flat. And that doesn't mean you, all of your expenses aren't going to go up, but it means we will be able to handle that within this fund without making a cost impact on your budget. As you can see, both active employee health and retiree health costs have been, have gone up certainly, but have been fairly small. A lot of that's due to the fact that we did add some plan choices, which brought some more competition in. We also have had the high deductible plans introduced, and that's created some savings. And the fact that actually the retiree, on the retiree health in particular, the numbers haven't really changed in terms of coverage, the number of people covered. Workers' comp and liability continue to go up at around a 6 to 8 percent margin, and those are things we need to constantly work on. They're, they're primarily based on experience rather than the group rating, but we need to certainly pay attention to those figures as they go up. Compensated leaves, we only present this, this is where people can cash out when they retire, certain leave balances they have, and they're also allowed to cash out some during the year. This used to be a major issue for us, and we had, the actual leave time buyout was about a million and a half to $2 million a year. We made some changes through collective bargaining, and we also set this fund up to measure that. We had at one time a minus, a negative, I think it was a million and a half dollars in the fund, and now you can see we're at almost a plus million. So we're in good shape in terms of being able to handle those costs. We also, this is the only fund that we have on what we call a watch list, and it's our trail grant fund of special revenue. When we do trails in particular, they come with grants that we get reimbursed after the fact. So we have to put the money out, we have to spend the money, then we have to apply to get the money. That certainly affects our cash flows that we're considering, and so we just keep a track on it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, you know, don't be too concerned that that's a negative, because it's always going to be a negative. You know, you get a million-dollar grant in, first you have to spend the money, and then it takes you a long time to get it back from whoever it was. And so that's fairly, it's been fairly level for a long time, so there's no real concern there. Again, we, we watch it just from a cash flow basis. And with that, I'll sum up and ask for any questions.
Any questions?
I have one question, just curious, Jim. Do you do any analysis about, you know, which, which areas of the city generate the most property tax or sales tax, or which areas of the city, you know, cost the most to maintain the infrastructure, or anything like that?
I can give you the cost of the sales tax by regions, and we have certain groupings of regions that way. We have to be a little careful with that, because while we get it by individual store, we're not allowed to release that information.
Okay, just curious.
So, but we do have it by groupings, and we can tell you the areas. We can do the same with property tax.
Okay, thank you.
But I think with regard to the, where the expenses are, that, majority of that information, you probably have to get from Public Works and Utilities.
Jim, are you going to talk anything at all, or did you with the CIP?
I didn't have anything presented there. I can tell you that we've had a very active year. I do have some notes there. During the past year, our major expenses were the Greenback paving, Madison paving, that was about 1 million 8. Fire Station 39 was about 1 million 8. The Lake Natoma Trail was a million 2. Economy Park was 700,000. Water Treatment Plant is about 500,000, that was a rehab of that. We've had about a half a million dollars in traffic signal improvements, and those are the, probably the largest ones we've had this year.
Let me ask you a basic question. Maybe, maybe I'm the only one here that don't understand it, but looking at the report, I had some questions. And I'll pick on my previous, like, in Park. When we, when they submit a CIP and we approve it as the priorities and all that, but nothing happens. When we, when they project a CIP that they want, you know, how much for different projects? Is that money then programmed to come into that in some manner, or?
It, it isn't, what's, what happens with the CIP is, it's a 10-year CIP. So each department will do a 10-year plan for what they anticipate happening. Certainly more detail with those projects that are immediate. And, but each of those projects then will come back to the council before they're started for the appropriation, and we'll have an estimate in the CIP of what we estimate it will cost, and over what times, what years, and where that money will come from. But that's not appropriated until that project comes back to the council for an official appropriation.
Is there any relationship to the projection of what they want to do through the CIP and the money that they project that's coming in?
Oh, yes, yeah. I mean, people will look at, you know, various sources of revenue for that and, and what they can do with that revenue, whether it's transportation revenue, or whether it's park improvement funds, impact fees, you know, they'll look at all of those.
Let me say it specific. I think on the CIP last year, we had the ballpark over at Davies Park on the other side of town.
Mm-hmm.
And a million something, I think it was. And then in your report, nothing's been spent at all. Now, was that projected out five years or 10 years out? What's going?
Yeah.
To me, I, I, I don't want the CIP to be a false wish list.
Yeah, once you've approved the project, like, in that particular case, and the money's been appropriated, then the money's reserved for that project. So the project may take two years to complete, but the money will be reserved for that project. And as it's spent, it will get recorded. But if it hasn't, you know, in that period of time, if nothing was actually spent on it, then it won't, it won't show anything at that.
Where is the money?
That doesn't mean the money's not there, though.
I can assure that that money is there somewhere, it's just a matter of resources to design it.
Yeah, we would have it in one of the special revenue accounts for that, and it would be reserved for that project. If, again, if the council's taken, and that one they have, but if the council's taken action, then yeah, the money is reserved for that project. It doesn't go anywhere else.
So then it's, it's just a case of resources to implement the project?
Yeah, yeah. It's what priority does it fall under, and how soon can they get it done, and when's the grant available, and all those kinds of things.
Does that carry over into the next CIP?
Yeah, yes, it will.
It's not a use-it-or-lose-it kind of situation. I mean, it's there.
Yeah, yeah. It will carry over as long as the project takes. The only time we would have a question, if it goes three years without an expenditure, then it, it pops up on our radar, and then we say, okay, what are we doing here? You know, are we going to do this, or aren't we? And we would come back to the council with direction, for direction on that.
I'm not sure I'm satisfied, but I'll take your explanation, probably me and.
I'll be glad to spend extra time if you'd like.
Is, is the question, Ernie, if the money doesn't get spent within three years, does somebody else get to grab it?
No, my, my big concern, I know, I don't worry too much, because I know you get priorities, you change them, and you only have so much manpower, and sometimes the projects, we like to do mostly in-house until the construction. I understand that, I'm not finding fault with anybody. I don't want the money to disappear somewhere or be siphoned off into another priority and we're still thinking that CIP is going to be happening within three years.
No, I think what Jim said right at the very beginning is, it's actually a 10-year CIP, so the wish list is, could, could go as far as 10 years out. So, but it doesn't mean that anybody else gets to steal the money. Any change in the CIP comes to the council for approval.
Well, see, the reason I picked that one, I'm familiar with that one, because I live over in that area. We did have some relief with the schools, but with the modification under Measure G, a lot of the ballparks are disappearing temporarily, at least. We've never had a Little League ball field over in my area, over in that area, okay? And that park's been probably in effect, well. And that park's been probably in effect, well, 10 years, 12 years. So we've been waiting for a Little League park, and it was a phase in because we had money coming in, and we had to phase the park, so we didn't finish them all at one time. Well, after 12 years or more, it's time to build that park for the people that live in that area, and the kids can play ball over there instead of coming over here all the time. That, that was my concern.
Councilmember Sheldon, we can get you an update on the status of Davies Park. That's helpful.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Mm-hmm.
And your staff. And with that, we will move on to the consent item. Anybody wishing to pull anything from consent?
Yep.
And I'm going to start, I'm going to pull F as in Frank, G and M as in Mary.
Mary.
Did I pull yours, Ernie?
No.
Okay, so what do you want to pull?
I want K.
Anybody else want to pull anything?
That's all. I got one on the next item.
Okay, so do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
All motion to move A, B, C, D, E, H, I, J, and L.
I'll second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Hal.
Yes. So can we, do you mind if we just go in order, Ernie?
Yes.
Okay, so my question on F is to Marcus. Just in looking through, one of the comments in the beginning part of the staff report is that the existing tank does not have cathodic protection in it. Is the work going to include the installation of that system?
Yes, Mayor Hal, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, environmental and water resources director. Yes, the tank project will incorporate a cathodic protection system.
Okay, it's just that it wasn't listed, and it was otherwise fairly detailed. So I will move Resolution 10232.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Hal.
Yes. And Item G, this one is for Marcus again. There's a, a lot of money got left on the table there. Like, a lot of money got left on the table there. So have you guys had any experience with this particular contractor?
We have not had experience with this particular contractor, although staff has followed up with the contractor, just verifying everything was correct in the bid, in their information of submittals, and they did not have any questions and/or comments or commentary back saying, no, we did, we made a mistake, nothing came back to us, and they said, this is what we have for the bid, and this is what we'll perform the project under.
Okay, well, I'm happy to hear that. But my next question is, we've got a, looks like a 20%. Normally we have 10%. You got a 20% contingency for change orders.
That is correct. One of the reasons we have that, one is...
You didn't think I was going to see that, did you?
Oh, no, it's, it's pretty clear, I think.
Why didn't you answer another?
For, yeah, and so, you know, one of the reasons, one, just because of the lower bid amount and just the scale of the project.
Because of the money that was left on the table, yeah.
The scale of the project, one, two.
How far under the estimate are they?
I believe about a little over 100,000, 110,000 roughly, under the engineer's estimate.
Okay.
One thing as well is we are working within the city of Rancho Cordova, so we have to work with their inspection team when this project is getting built, because it's right next to Naturewood in Folsom Boulevard.
Okay.
And so we just don't know, one, what we're going to counter, and two, if they will surprise us with any items that they would require when we are installing the project, or when the contractor's installing the project.
Okay, but since it's our water line, it's really just going to be one encouragement permit from them and roadway work?
Correct.
Okay. All right, my concerns are satisfied, just know that I'll be watching. With that, I'll move Resolution 10233.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Hal.
Yes. Ernie, K.
Okay. It's under the resolution on the, the new, to bring the zoning in town up to match our new plan that we just approved last year. And I want to state right from the beginning, I have no problem with the, with this deal, you know, because we need to do that. I, I don't have no problem, and I have no problem with the proposed consultants and the steps. I have a problem with the $100,000 grant that we asked for from the SACOG. I read the contract that we have to sign if and when we do it, and I found it invasive in my mind, from my 35 years being here, working on things, that I don't like that type of a contract, where I feel that they're telling us how to run our business, and for $100,000, I don't think that's adequate for the do it. I don't think we need to go there. I think this town is physically capable of, not, as I told one young lady today, there's no free, there's no free money, it's not a free lunch anywhere. And specifically, the concerns I had was, they have, they have a program, and I recognize a program, they have an oversight commitment, I understand that. But I think in some cases, they may be, in my mind, extending it into our area as an elected official, I don't like nobody outside this town telling us how to run our town to that degree. Now, I could just, maybe the council might have a different perspective, and I honor that, but I could not in good conscience after reading it. That's the first contract I seen with SACOG. If it's all like that, I don't understand, it must have asked for big money to give away our, what I consider our authority and scope. I, I'm not an isolationist, but I sure and the devil think that we need to, there's five of us here elected to represent the people of this town, and some of those things may not necessarily be good for our town if we do what they say. They, they, obviously they have, they have a mandate. They, they're looking for building and, and high density and all that kind of stuff. Just listen to the people in our town, they're telling us, take it easy, okay? And probably not unique in Folsom, but that, we're hearing it, we should hear it. And I, and I feel, and I did talk to the city manager on this, and I talked to the director, Pam, of the planning department, so I, I'm, I just wanted to bring it as a concern today, so the council can...
Ernie, could you just be more specific of, as to what you disagree with on the contract?
Yeah, I think, I think we, it, when I read the contract, it looks that we have to answer to them specifically what they're looking to get in order to justify Step 2, Step 3, Step 4. And I don't, maybe I, I'm looking at it too critical, but actually I would do it.
Could I ask, Councilmember Sheldon, if I could ask Pam Johns to respond to what degree accepting this SACOG grant would constrain us or not constrain us in terms of our future actions?
Yeah, and I will say that I did speak with Councilmember Sheldon today about this, and the SACOG approached us and made us aware of the opportunity with our new general plan policies that align with the SACOG blueprint to pursue their community design grant options, which allow for up to $100,000 for each community in the jurisdiction for qualifying projects with a $10,000 match. And we are certainly familiar with the SACOG blueprint principles, and this council's policies align with those. And really, that's the maximum extent of that arrangement. They don't have any approval authority over our final document. They simply say that our general plan, specifically as it relates to policies encouraging mixed-use development along the East Bidwell Corridor and in our transit corridors, align very well with the SACOG blueprint principles. And so we pursued the grant, saying, yes, we have a qualifying project because we're in the process of doing a comprehensive update, and we're given a recommendation for award of that grant. And so what the MOU identifies, which is attached to your report, is that we have a relationship with a project manager, our, our project manager, Desmond Parrington here, which would, principal planner, would serve as the project manager in coordination with Greg Chu at SACOG, to simply make sure that the simple scope of work is in keeping, you know, when we submit our invoices for that work that proceeds, we would provide an invoice to them about every month to three months, saying, yes, we've made these milestone achievements in keeping with the general scope. They would review it and say, yes, it looks like that's been done, you now can receive your portion of the payment. So they don't have any review authority over that final document if, in, in the end, they thought that in fact our adopted policy didn't in fact achieve any mixed use. I guess they could say you don't get your final, you know, $10,000, but it, the objective of achieving mixed-use development allows for a whole lot of ways for how you achieve that, and I think that's what Councilmember Sheldon was, was concerned about, was, at least based on our conversation, that, that they might dictate exactly what that solution looked like, and that they would somehow have control over that process. And, you know, based on our discussions and understanding with them, that's, that's not a concern that, that we share at a staff level.
Well, let me give you, I, I, my son cautioned me, he said, Dad, don't go back and talk to the HSE or it doesn't say you're old. And, but I have to bring up a recent SACOG operation when, out of your department, when you, you were in charge, on the corporation yard, and going through similar, although this is a new plan, and I know you need to do this. Corporation's project was probably designed by certain special interests and SACOG. I'm not sure, although the letter that we sent to them requiring the grant of $100,000 sort of implied that what they were looking for will achieve. That's like, that's like calling the score of a football game before you played it. And the one thing that they were looking for in that particular operation was to show high-density zoning in the corp yard when it became vacant, so that it coincides with the idea that SACOG has on every light rail station, you emphasize high-density to encourage ridership. I'm sure that's what it was. Well, that was probably the most disastrous I've ever seen in this city as far as operations, what it came to, and which was finally the city terminated and put it on hold for future consideration later. But that's what I'm worried, I, I'm, I'm looking at this contract, and I'm remembering, not too old, this is a year or two old, this project with the corp yard. And, and the report that was tried to come out of there was just consistent with help SACOG with not, it was killing us, as far as us being the city, all of us. And so I was, that's exactly what, when I saw that late at night reading, I said, oh no, not again. So that's why I'm raising it. I, I'm not against the project, I'm not against the consultants that you want to work with, and I know, as the city manager tells me, we're just starting, okay? And we may come up when we do this project, which I'm sure we will, we may say that we have to change the plan, not necessarily the zoning, because that was a major operation at plan, a long time in operation, so you may have to, you know, make a modification. But I, I could not in good conscience vote for this tonight without expressing that concern. And I think everybody, we're here to represent this town, and, and I've done the best I could, and I think everybody here has also. But I just want, I just could not just vote tonight without, on the consent calendar to say that that's all good, everything else on it, I have no problem, but that particular thing, I do have a problem.
Pam, I have a question. We're not looking at updating the zoning map, we're just looking at updating the code, correct?
Primarily, yes, but there may be changes discovered during that time where we might come back to you and say, we'd like to look at some, some changes to the map, but at this point, that's not, that's not right in front of you. What's in front of you is the, the text changes.
And in either way, that would come back to us prior, before consideration, so there's really not, not much exposure, and a lot of this funding goes to the E-Trackit program to help, some of that, that $100,000 is going to go towards that outline in here, right?
Yes, some of the additional, kind of separate from the zoning code update discussion is that additional appropriation for a range of things, including track and implementation.
But the point, you know, as, as Councilmember Sheldon and I just did discuss, this is, we're at the starting line, and, and as we move forward, it will continue to come back to the council at regular intervals. And I just want to reiterate and underscore that, that SACOG has no sign-off ability on the zoning code at, at any point in this process, that lies with this body, whether or not we accept this grant.
They will not be reviewing it, they will not be getting copies of the draft, all they'll be doing is getting updates from our staff that, yes, we've gotten to this part of the scope of work, and this is where we said we were going to be, and so they write a check for $10,000, or whatever, whatever percentage of the hundred grand it is.
Correct, an invoice and a report that explains where we're at in the process, and then they review that, make sure they believe that's consistent with what we've outlined our plan to be, and then they, they remit payment.
But they have no ability to comment on the zoning, the update of the zoning code itself.
That's correct.
Did you get all your questions answered?
I, I respect the answer I got, I, I have a high respect with the director and, and the city manager. I'm not, I'm still not, in back of my mind, I just, I just, I may, tonight, I probably will abstain to vote, and that's not negating my responsibility, but I, I could not vote no, because I think the project is well desired, we need it. But at the same time, I am not convinced, based on this recent thing that we went through at SACOG, that, that it happens that way. So, yeah, I, I would say...
Can I ask a question? Just to make sure I'm understanding this, my reading of this is that SACOG's interest in our project is that we spend the grant they're giving us on this project.
Yes, and that our project description, as we've outlined it, aligns with the SACOG blueprint principles, and they're happy about that. So more importantly and more specifically, in our general plan adopted by this council, that, that we're making sure that that project is consistent with our local general plan, which again, those specific policies align also with SACOG blueprint, but they will not be reviewing.
Thank you.
Or evaluating the merit of that.
So we've already hit SACOG's approval threshold, they're not reviewing the zoning code, looking that we adhere to any of their standards in exchange for the dollars.
Correct, and in fact, they don't have, as I discussed with Commissioner, Councilmember Sheldon today, that they don't actually have detailed and specific, you know, model ordinance, one size fits all for how you do mixed-use development, right?
Well, since you all have sort of raised some new ideas in my brain, and this, this particular meeting's on tape, so I don't have to say, oh, you misunderstood it, I can go back and understand it from the tape. I probably will defer my abstention or my negative vote in respect to your opinions, and I'll probably vote yes for it.
Okay, well, I think we can solve the mystery by calling the question. Anybody want to move the item?
I'll move Resolution 10237.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Hal.
Yes. Okay, and my next question is on, for the Public Works Department, that looks like a huge number for the railroad tracks.
Yeah, it is a big number. There's a lot of work to do, we're raising the grade of the railroad tracks, we're putting it on a 2% angle.
Uh-huh.
To assist with the, the slope of the road through there, and...
And that's going to work for the, for the rail vehicles?
Yep.
Okay, and are you also replacing a storm drain?
Yes.
Just out of curious, curiosity, why don't we do the storm drain when we did the water pipe?
Well, we actually halted the water pipe, pipe crossing for this project, so they'll be undertaking that as well as part of this project. So that was part of the, the delay in the project. We've been ready to go with this since about 2014, 2015, and as the plan area infrastructure was coming along, we didn't want to impact that intersection two or three times, and we held off the crossing of the future 30-inch water line to be done as part of this project as well. It's not included in these numbers, but they're going to be in the worksite as well, doing that work.
Okay, I was just wondering why the number was so high, that's all.
Well, the estimate was, we didn't refresh the estimate since 2014, as part of it.
Okay, all right. Again, another one, I'll be watching. So I'll move Resolution 10239.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
And Hal.
Yes. And we move on to new business.
New business item, A is mayor's appointment and confirmation by the city council of planning commissioners to serve on this historic district commission.
I would like to make a comment before we do any more discussion on this subject. If permissible, Miss, Madam Mayor? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just before you do that, do we, does staff have anything to say in advance of the comment?
No, nothing that is outlined in the report. No, nothing that isn't outlined in the report.
Would it be worthwhile to identify what action is requested or recommended?
We are being asked to confirm the request by the planning commission to, I'm starting looking for the item, to appoint two planning commissioners to the historic district commission, and those two commissioners, as recommended by the planning commission at their most recent meeting, are Kevin Duhl and Daniel West.
For the term ending December 2020.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. My concerns is not with the individuals, I'm saying to refine people, okay? My concern is what the devil is the planning commission is going to do on the HDC? What is their role? Since I've been observing it as a council member, I just thought that the planning commissioners that would be appointed to HDC are there for the qualification as an expansion of the planning that they experience. That makes sense to me as a layman in that area. And in the past, the ones that I have observed that have been appointed to this position have had that experience in the planning department. You had some senior people in there. Now, these two people we promote, the council, the commissioner of recommended approval, neither one, one that he calls an incumbent, has two, two or three months incumbency. That's how the incumbent, but it is by definition. The other gentleman's brand new, but I think he, or the strong point he has, he lived in another area, in a historic area. I think that would be a plus. But I'm looking, what is the definition of that planning commissioner, those two planning commissioners to the HDC? I thought they would be going there to give their expertise. But if they haven't been in the planning commission, they're brand new, where does that experience come from? I don't understand it. So tonight, I'm running to my people to explain to me, my fellow council people, what are they? Maybe they got a different opinion. I've been sitting there thinking, that's additional expertise, because the way that HDC is constructed right now, it's by specific areas of definition of what their job is, who they are, their architect, or in a business there, resident there, and so forth. But I don't, and I went back to see when the HDC was formed, to see if I could get some education as to what with the planning commission. All it showed me is that, at the meeting that it was approved to view, I was at that meeting because there was other comments that I was putting paper on. So I was there. But my understanding, I think maybe we could just have it, because I think this council, before we go too much further, I'm not saying before these parties have approved or disapproved, we have to discover what is the, is the purpose of the HDC, okay? I really think that's a discussion, but that should be a workshop amongst us with, with the HDC, with the people involved, with the planning commission, a workshop. I'm not going to say that today, but today.
You can certainly make that request, but that is not the agenda item that we're looking at.
Understand. I will make that to you. That's why I don't want to go further. But I just think, is it no experience required to be on a commission, specific? I mean, when we, when we all run, we appoint people, and I'm not, I'm not arguing the qualification of the individual as people. I think they're good people. I will call, I will ask, I don't think they have the experience, okay, for this particular one. But that's, that's my, that's my assessment, and that's worth one vote. So I, that's why I raise the issue. I just want to know, what's the expertise, what is yours, Pam? What do you think they're appointed to do down on that other commission?
So that, so it doesn't clarify in the code. So that, you know, there's no specific language in the code other than to say there's two planning commissioners that serve on the historic district commission. And I can't speak to the history since that was formed 20-plus years ago. And, and I, so I don't know the range of experience, but, but representation of the planning commission is certainly what's always been provided on the historic district commission. So the other five spots on the historic district commission have specific roles and responsibilities to fill based on the qualification requirements. But the, but the planning commission positions are, you know, simply at large on, on that group. So I don't know if the city attorney wants.
My assumption as a layman was that their planning commissions are the help to the planning process, because the individual by, by specific job, there doesn't says they have to be a planner, there doesn't says they have to understand the city, nothing is there, okay? And so that's what I'm saying. I think the planning commission is going down there to bring the expertise. In the past, I could not argue that point, because you had Arneaz, you had all kinds of people, okay? The chairs, the vice chairs are on that thing. That's no argument. But this here, the expertise as a planning commission, not as a good person, or a good individual educator, all that kind, no, it's just planning commission experience. Now, if you tell me that's not necessary, then what are they doing there?
Ernie, I think, I think at this point, that's more of a rhetorical question.
Okay.
And we can have a conversation about discussing this at a future meeting or some sort of a workshop, but that's not what the agenda item is tonight. I get that you're, that you're questioning this, but this has been the situation for 24 years that I'm aware of, and I think it's actually much longer than that. So I'd like to just take action on this tonight, and you're obviously entitled to, to vote on this however you, you would like to. And then we'll have a discussion in the future about the historic district commission, whether or not we continue to have planning commissioners that are a part of it, or I think that discussion needs to take place in a, in a different forum. And it's certainly not the agenda item for tonight.
But it's relative to it, but I agree with, I have no objection. But I'm just saying, it does, it strikes me as weird. To me, I would, if they need to be there to help the HDC function, then go ahead and we'll vote on them so they can sit there. But the HDC, we have got to have a workshop, and I would discuss this further, not to get out of the agenda item in the comments, but.
All right. You and I can, you and I can talk about that privately.
Okay. And I will just point out real quickly that when you talk about considering this in the future with the zoning code, this is part of the zoning code, that, that section is in the zoning code. So when we open our zoning code book and we're at the start of this process, you will have the opportunity to talk about that, you know, kind of the administration of the city's functions in that regard. And so, you know, that certainly could be discussed as, as part of the zoning code update or, or called up separately, you know, if, if you think that it's necessary. But we have a, a long laundry list of, you know, dozens even probably 100 items that we've been kind of keeping track of over time that maybe aren't a huge problem or issue, but something we want to look at, the potential of modifying or clarifying in the future, and we could add this to the list.
If I could. So kind of to Ernie's point a little bit, and not to denigrate the, the planning commission's appointments or recommendations, I think there's two folks on there, two commissioners that would better serve in that capacity, that have more history, that actually live in the historic district. One is a business owner in the historic district has, and that's, that's Commissioner Kevin Mallory. So I don't know if that's, if this is somewhere where it'd be appropriate if I motioned that we look at two others as opposed to what the, the commission recommended currently.
You can certainly make a motion to recommend doing something else if you like.
So I guess, yeah, if this is the right time, I'd like to motion, we consider.
It's called, it's just making a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we consider Kevin Mallory and Jennifer Lane as appointments to the historic district commission as opposed to Daniel West and Kevin Duhl.
Do we have a second?
I'll give you a second.
So can we have some discussion?
Yes.
First of all, I would point out, Mr. Mallory did not put his name in the hat. He actually said, I'm not going to throw my ring and, my hat in the ring, but, you know, these are the three items that I would like Historic District Commissioner to consider. So.
Can I address that? So to your point, he didn't, out of, out of fear of alienating himself from the new members of that commission, so he didn't want to make it a point. When we circled back and discussed that, we talked about what his position is, what, what his expertise are, and solely focused, you know, Jennifer's would be, you know, a separate topic, but as far as Commissioner Mallory, he, he is a marketing, like genius as far as, you know, with regards to that aspect. He also has his business in the historic district, and he lives right smack dab where a lot of these issues are raised, and he's, he is an incumbent on the planning commission. So he told me about that. I watched it myself just to, just to go back and check it out. And that was really what it is. The goal with him is to try and kind of build a relationship and build a coalition on that, on that commission as opposed to create any wave. So that, that addresses that topic.
So here are my thoughts. You know, Councilmember Sheldon, if I'm not mistaken, you had the same concern two years ago when Mr. Rathel was recommended to be on the historic district commission. And I think by all accounts, it has worked out very well for him. He's now, you know, unanimously reappointed as the, as the chair of the planning commission.
Yeah, can I answer that?
Uh huh.
Okay. The difference at that time, Rathel had served some time on the planning commission. He wasn't the first time on the agenda. I mean, it's, it's apples and oranges when you, and Rathon had done a good job. And he would have been an excellent one to go back, except he was voted the chair. And he recognized as the chair of the planning commission, that's a big responsibility. And he didn't think he had the time to split his way, and I agree with him completely. So my objection at that time, okay, was, was nothing. And he had served pretty well, as far as I'm concerned. He had the two years on the commission. So I think it's different, okay?
Well, I, if I'm not mistaken, I think he had only been on the planning commission a couple of months. But, you know.
Maybe.
I'm really excited about this planning commission, and I'm, I'm very proud of the commission that we've assembled. I think if you look at it on paper, you might think that it won't work, but, you know, we've got a range of political ideologies, we've got a range of professional experience and, you know, interests in the community. And I just, I think if you watch that meeting, you can see that it is going to work. It is going to be a very functional planning commission. And when those folks were putting their hat in the ring, those four, and, you know, they were all very articulate in terms of why they were interested in taking on that duty and, and what their qualifications were. And, and I just think that we can send a message to the planning commission tonight that, look, we value the work that you're going to do. We trust that even when there are differences of opinion, that you are going to handle yourselves professionally, because they did, and something that was, you know, pretty emotional. So, you know, the, the vote to recommend these two gentlemen to join the historic district commission was six in favor, zero opposed, and one abstention. So I don't understand.
No, that was a right.
Yes, it was.
Well, regardless.
Yes, it is. That's correct.
At the end of the day, it's still a recommendation. We have the final decision. So that's why I'm saying, I'm not looking at, I'm not looking to, to, you know, mitigate the fact that they made that decision and that that was the unanimous decision on there. But there were, there were specific reasons why some folks didn't vote and some did for it. But what I'm saying is that there's better qualified candidates to put on that historic district commission. Case in point, the, you know, Jennifer, her, her strong stance with the historic district and her history and knowledge with it. Kevin's point, he's in that district, he lives it, and he's better suited as a business owner there and a marketing graphic. There's, there's an identity crisis there with, with business and whatnot. And there's new struggles that need to be, need to be looked at. And that's why I'm saying, it's not about, you know, saying there, it's not a qualified decision or I don't agree with what they took, the action they took, but it is a recommendation, and I feel there are better suited folks for that position. So nothing against the candidates.
And I just want to respond to Sarah. I am not criticizing the planning commission as it's constituted. I'm optimistic as you are. I think it's going to be good. It's new people, we have, just a couple turnovers. No, this is not talking about, you're given the go ahead, rah 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 for the commission. I'm all for you. I'll say, yeah. I'm talking about two specific appointments for, and I don't know what they, what they're there to do. If they're there to give expertise on planning, at planning commissioners, they don't have it yet. They just don't have it. I mean, it's obvious. But I'm not, that doesn't, that doesn't distract from the goodness of the planning commission. I think it's an excellent commission.
Madam Mayor, I don't want to interrupt your healthy conversation and discussions with the council members.
Oh, please do.
But I do want to just clarify for the benefit of the audience, the appointment of the seven-member historic district commissioners on the commission, that appointment is solely the responsibility of the mayor. So the mayor gets to appoint those commissioners, each and every one of them, subject to consent of the city council. So the mayor has graciously allowed a motion to, to substitute the two being recommended by the planning commission with two different planning commission members.
And given, and given, Steve, that, that we would like the opinion of the council, that's why I've done that?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am. I just wanted the audience to understand the power is with the mayor, the authority is with the mayor. The mayor has graciously allowed a motion to substitute the two being recommended.
Madam Mayor, may I make some comments?
Yes.
So, so on this topic, I think philosophically, I am inclined to not micromanage any of the commissions or their decisions. And the recommendation they made was of two people who volunteered to, to serve on the historic district commission. So substituting them, I think undermines the credibility of their decision-making process and is, you know, bordering on inappropriate action by us, unless there is something egregiously wrong with their selection. Councilman Sheldon, with respect to the level of experience that is necessary to serve on, in those two spots on the historic district commission, there's a number of things that act as backstops. There are an advisory board to this body or to the planning commission. So there's many steps that have to go through. The professional expertise that's necessary for that board is provided by our city staff. And the five other members of that board are all required to have local expertise by experience of being a resident, being a business owner, being an architect, and other qualifications that are necessary. So I think there's lots of levels of oversight, and each one of us at one point started a new job without a lot of experience or asked people to vote for us without us having had these jobs before. And most of the time, it works out pretty well. So I'm inclined to accept the recommendation of the planning commission. But with respect to Mr. Mallory and Mrs. Lane, or Ms. Lane, I think that they are highly qualified to serve in those roles if they had been recommended to us. But I will caution us all that we have had many discussions community-wide about the historic district commission, and there are some seemingly intractable problems down there that having some fresh eyes on might be the most valuable thing that we can provide. So the two new people, new people that are inexperienced may actually be excellent mediators in this particular instance.
And with respect to your comments, I don't think we're, it's egregious to make, to take this here, because this isn't a decision they get to make. They recommend it to us. So this is what we do, but, well, what the mayor does. So, I mean, she's allowed our input on that. So the, the comparing the planning commission to the city council elections is apples and watermelons. I mean, it's, it's not the same at all. So I don't know. I just, I disagree with both of those statements. I do agree that fresh eyes are welcome on it, but that, I think all of them, as, except for Justin, would be fresh eyes. So, I don't know.
Okay. Well, I'm going to remind everybody again that our, our objective here is tonight is, are we going to take the planning commission's recommendations for who should represent the planning commission on the historic district, or are we not? We have a motion and a second on the table. My personal feeling, just to add where I'm coming from, I don't know that the city council has ever gone against the recommendation of the planning commission for who should serve on the historic district commission. I'm not questioning the, frankly, I'm not questioning anybody's ability to provide reasonable and intelligent input from the planning commission to the historic district commission. One concern that I do have with regard to the individuals that have been proposed is the potential for conflicts of interest, because they cannot take action on anything that is close to their residence or business. So, and I, and I completely appreciate Mike's comments that, you know, getting a different set of eyes from people that don't live there, that have not been involved in the day-to-day discussions about some of the issues that have been happening or, and we can, we're going to have another discussion about that later. But I think a fresh set of eyes is a good idea. So that's where I'm coming from. But if any, does anybody else have any other questions? Otherwise, I'm going to call the question on the first motion.
Councilmembers Kozlowski.
No.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Aquino.
No.
Gaylord.
Yes.
And Hal.
No.
I will move that we accept the recommendation of the planning commission to appoint Kevin Duhl and Dan West to the historic district commission. Dool and Dan West to the Historic District Commission.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
No.
Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
No.
And Hal?
Yes.
And with that, we move on to City Managerial Reports.
Good evening, everyone. The Folsom community is coming together to celebrate the 100th anniversary of the iconic Rainbow Bridge with a centennial celebration. The celebration began last Sunday, February 10th, with a variety of special promotions, events, and activities taking place over 100 days, leading up to a day-long celebration on Saturday, May 4th, Historic District. We've had broad media coverage and a lot of interest in this event. If you're interested, please go to www.folsomrainbowbridge.com/celebrations to learn more. The application period for local nonprofit organizations and corporations to sell state-approved, these are the Safe and Sane Fireworks in the City of Folsom, runs from March 1st through the 29th. And so, for more information, please visit our Folsom Fire Department's webpage. If you have a teenager who you feel needs to get busier this summer, we're now hiring for summer jobs in our Folsom Parks and Rec Department for summer day camp counselors and site leaders, and our Folsom Aquatic Center is also hiring for lifeguards, swim instructors, snack bar attendants, and other jobs. So, again, take a look at our website if you have anyone in your household who might be interested. Thank you.
Mike, would you like to start?
Sure. I had...
Council comment, sorry.
I had the opportunity to attend the SECOG Policy and Innovation Committee, which I have been appointed to on Monday, and the staff at SECOG, interestingly, given the comments that we had earlier tonight, has offered up the Green Means Go program, which is another pilot that they're proposing. And they're trying to collect project proposals that would be for more, to be able to accelerate infill development, accelerate travel options, and accelerate the development and adoption of electric vehicles. And they're trying to collect up those proposals so that they can make a request to the state for some funding. If we decide that we would like to pursue that, they've asked the council to make a comment of support for the program. So, I'll provide that to everybody.
Do we have to come up with a project or just general support for the program?
They would like either, but definitely support for the program. So, it's a pilot program. Their summary of it is, Green Means Go is a multi-year pilot program to lower greenhouse gas emissions in the Six County Sacramento region by establishing a green zone that also corresponds with the green transit corridors that are in the other SECOG plans. So, that's effectively it. I'll distribute this to everybody, and we can decide what to do with it next time.
Okay, and I think that's maybe something that probably falls into the realm of both community development and public works.
Yeah, and this is something, Mayor, with your direction, we're happy to, you know, consider and bring back for consideration to the City Council.
All right. Awesome. And I just, I'll ask Councilmember Gaylord, as the AQMD rep, have they supported this, or is SECOG requesting support from them?
I haven't heard it yet, but we can talk about it.
Great. And then just two other real quick things on other topics. A very enterprising Girl Scout reached out to us to try and get a steache to buy cookies, and I challenged her to come to the City Council meeting. So, Clara T., if you happen to have gotten my text message and you're out there watching the meeting, if you come here, I will definitely buy cookies from you, and I'll extend that offer to...
I already bought eight boxes. I'm not necessarily going to guarantee that.
I will also extend that offer to any other Girl Scout that comes and sits through part of our school, or, excuse me, our City Council meeting, because I am a junkie for dosy doses.
I'll give you some of mine.
Yeah. And then finally, the soccer teams at Vista del Lago both were selected for high seeds in the playoffs, and the boys were playing right now. So, they should have won their first game already as the number-one seed in Division III. The girls have a game tomorrow at 6:00 PM. So, if you'd like some inexpensive, excellent entertainment, the Vista Soccer Women will be in action at 6:00 PM at the stadium at Vista tomorrow.
It's going to be cold and wet.
Thank you.
Roger? Simple. I actually wanted to congratulate Nick Gladding for reaching his Eagle Scout award. So, that was, I got the honor of presenting the proclamation. Thank you for providing. And same with Clara. I received that letter as well, and I texted as well, and I have not been able to buy cookies. So, I am in full support of buying a mass quantity of cookies from her, and her letter was phenomenal, just the way she wrote it and presented herself. So, that was awesome to see, but thank you.
Well, if anybody's interested, I have some really good Girl Scout cookie recipes on my Facebook page. For those coconut ones, they're super good. And I'm waiting to try that till my cookies get delivered. Ernie?
Well, I'm into same cookies, but my son went ahead and bought about eight or 10 from the neighbor next door. But I did send a response to the girl. I think it's a great idea. I told her, "Take the money and buy whatever she wanted. Maybe buy it herself and eat it. It's acceptable."
Oh, so you gave her the donation, but requested that she not deliver the cookies?
Yeah. Do what you want to do. That's her choice.
You can actually opt out to have them sent into the military also.
Yeah, that's very good. Well, all of us on this right, on this group right here, we all attended a tremendous assignment or event the other day with the Burnett Media Center over at the Folsom, or the Center Middle School. It was done well. I mean, and if you had any concerns about the money being spent on Measure G and the Oversight Committee, which I believe you are the Chair, or was the Chair, that's a beautiful facility. That school is just tremendous. And if you go into the Media Center, you think Star Wars is going to get you. I mean, it is fantastic. So, highest kudos to everybody in this district and all the people that put that on. It was a fantastic affair, you know. So, good stuff. Now, I'm going to come back here as councilman and say, I'm going to request the mayor to put the HTC workshop idea, to give it some thought and talk about it. I'd like to talk to you about it, because I have here some pictures of affordable housing, not affordable housing, granny flats. Now, you call them accessory houses, I guess. I've got five pages of it. The first page shows what it supposedly started the program out, okay? They look like the Old Town. The next page, it shows granny flats with three-car garages, double height. I think somewhere, we got lost. Either the city got lost, the state told us to get lost, or something's going wrong. I'm not saying we should deprive, and now as I hear through the grapevine, I haven't confirmed it, the real estate people are suggesting buy down there and put a granny flat in their backyard. Now, it's great, but people don't want to have an extra income. I don't fault that for buying a house with that idea. But I think we completely lost control of what was originally a good idea to expand to people that, but I thought we'd stay in...
Pam, could you explain to Ernie how we actually have lost control?
Yes. The state has issued a mandate and established legislation to limit local authority over second dwelling units, accessory dwelling units. And so, those second dwelling units don't actually go to the Historic District Commission for review and approval. They come to the planning staff, and there's, you know, kind of a checkbox type of process that we go through. And so, it is very different. And in the areas where you're describing, you know, because I have the same set of pictures from the Historic Preservation Group, and so, we have them. But I just want to clarify...
So, just for the record, those actually came from HPL, not HTC?
Yes, they came from HPL, and the Historic District Commission does not have review authority over second dwelling units within the Historic District. That's a staff-level review that's intended to be more ministerial-like building permit issuance, and so, it's a different type of review.
Well, to me, that's a disconnect. And the proof is in the pudding right here. Look at it. That's not historical preservation of Old Town. We all get up here and we all talk about the gem of Folsom, Old Town, and we're killing it. We're making it New Town.
Ernie, Pam, just explain, there's nothing we can do about it.
Okay. You can have a workshop on it.
We can have a workshop, but we can't do anything about it.
Oh, I don't think that's true.
That is true. The only thing that we could do is have a workshop about whether or not we wanted to change state law, because that's what we would have to do.
Are you saying we have no, I know we can't stop them from building, but we can't tell them the code? But somebody else goes and builds a house in Old Town? You tell them what the code is?
They have to comply with the code, but it's a different type of review process. And I'd be happy to meet with you and explain it in more detail, but we have the same pictures and concerns. We sat down with the Historic Preservation Group, and we, you know, we're going through a process of explaining to them kind of, you know, how those types of things happen. So...
I welcome the time to sit down and go over, because this is not right. If we have to go to the state and show them an example of what they're doing, that would happen to every Old Town in the community, everywhere. It's ridiculous.
And the state law has been in effect for almost 10 years now, I think. And so, it's been amended a couple of times to put additional restrictions and clarifications on that law, and we have updated our regulations to keep in concert with that.
Which is, basically, is nothing. Tell the real estate people, sell the lot, and you can do what the heck you want to do. That's not...
There are some provisions and restrictions, and I'm happy to walk through that with you and explain that.
Thank you.
Ernie, was that all you had for comments?
Thank you.
Okay. Sarah?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to request that at a future meeting, we bring back the City of Folsom Code of Ethics and Conduct for elected officials, commission and committee members. It was adopted in 2006, and it just seems like a good idea to, you know, review that and refresh that. And I would just add that I'm not in a hurry, so if there are other ordinances, resolutions, whatever, that kind of go along with this good governance, and if it makes sense to consider, you know, all of those and review all of those together, then I'm fine with that. Other than that, welcome to our seven new police officers. We're happy to have you here in Folsom.
Thank you. Recently, I've attended STA meetings. There's still talk about what we're going to do regionally to meet our transportation responsibilities and how we're going to fund those. The most recent issue at RT, on the RT Board, that you may have read about in the paper, had to do with one of the members of the Sacramento City Council coming to the RT Board, that person also happened to sit on the RT Board, and request that the RT Board give consideration to leasing a portion of a parking lot to the City of Sacramento, and the City of Sacramento is likely to consider whether or not to make that area a homeless shelter. I just want to clarify that the action on the part of the RT Board is going to be to lease or not to lease the property to the City of Sacramento. The RT Board is not condoning or having anything to do with whether or not the City of Sacramento, with property that they lease from RT, may or may not build a shelter. So, please don't email me about whether you do or do not think there should be a shelter adjacent to the Florin Road Light Rail Station, because that's not what I'm doing as an RT Board member. So, just wanted to make that clear. I have a regional sanitation district board meeting in the morning. Nothing significant. I don't think they're setting up some new programs for educational opportunities on properties that are within the buffer land area near the plant. So, that's going to be mostly middle and high school educational opportunities. And as that moves forward, I'll let perhaps the folks at the school district have some information about how we might participate in that. And we had our first meeting for the large group that will be planning this year's Community Service Day. Christine, what's the date on that? September 21st? So, if there's anybody that's interested in that, there's already some preliminary information that's being posted on the city's website. If you have a project, a suggestion for a project, if you want to volunteer, if you want to make a contribution, they're looking for financial contributions. We're looking for people to donate paper bags. We're hoping that we can get uniformity. So, like if you're Schrader Joes and you're watching this tonight, you know, 10,000 paper bags, that'd be really cool, that would then be used for the food collection that takes place as part of that event. Last year, we had a little over 3,500 people participate. It's an amazing day that I think there were 70 projects, something like that. There's everything from the ultra-physical to the sitting down in the library writing letters. So, find something that interests you and get involved in the program. It's a really, really good project, and it's a wonderful activity that showcases the talents and the volunteerism in the City of Folsom. So, I encourage people to participate. People are still running red lights and taking walks in the dark, wearing all-black clothes. Please don't do that. Stop me if you see me. I probably have three or four safety vests in the trunk of my car. I'm happy to give you one, but please be out there carefully. Drive like your mother or Chief Hillman is behind you. And with that, I will thank you all for being here tonight, and we are adjourned at 8:39.